Welcome. My name is Rob McCray with the Democrats Rocky River Pet Committee. We're thrilled to have City Council candidate Lisa Havman here today to talk to, who is running for Rocky River City Council at large. And thanks for coming today to your own office. Appreciate that, Lisa, as you're taking time out of your day. As we speak, we are only three days from the election. People are voting early right now. Pretty exciting.
I wouldn't vote early.
But so you're at the home stretch here. Tell me what your experience has been like so far on the campaign trail about speaking to folks in Rocky River and what are they thinking?
Yeah, well, aside from the unpredictability of the weather, it's been really great. So I really enjoy getting out and meeting all the different, you know, as many residents as I possibly can. I've been visiting all the different neighborhoods. And I think that's been so useful and probably has been the most to prepare me because every neighborhood has such a unique personality and people have very different concerns depending on where they live. And obviously, I don't live everywhere, so I wouldn't know those things unless I was talking to them about it.
Just to recap a little civics lesson, we have four wards in Rocky River. And as an at-large candidate, you represent the entire city. We have four at-large people running with three positions on City Council at-large, and then four wards. Ward one is pretty much where we are near the lakeshore. And then two is close to the center ridge area. Three is the middle school district, and four is sort of the southern, south of Hilliard kind of area, just in general. But each one has its own unique geography and possibly different issues that are of concern. And each probably has its own issues as far as traffic or concerns. We've been having some traffic issues recently in the city. Can you speak to that and what you've heard from residents?
So definitely traffic safety is a big topic of conversation. You know, there was already concerns from the Green Team and likely even about, you know, the safety for cyclists and pedestrians, really. And they're trying to get lanes, bike lanes for their safety, but also pedestrian safety has been an issue lately. There's been a couple accidents. And I know the city has been trying to do things to sort of slow traffic or calm traffic. Obviously, more needs to be done since there were two accidents, but that's definitely a big concern. And then also the traffic around schools in general, just because, you know, with all the drop-off pickup, it just really increases the volume. So it's, you know, there's kids walking to school, biking to school, people dropping, you know, everyone off, and it's a, you know, everyone's distracted and in a hurry. So there's definitely concerns about street safety.
Just on the general topic of safety and security, you've had a chance to speak to the police chief, haven't you, during your preparation for this?
Yeah, so there were some ordinances that had come up recently that people were concerned about, you know, about prohibiting sleeping and camping in the parks and a lot of low-speed, underspeed vehicles. Those ordinances are on hold right now while they're doing more research, but I wanted to find out like what caused those, you know, sparked those ordinances to come about and what they hope to gain, you know, by passing them. And while I met with him, we also discussed a lot about street safety and, you know, ways to improve those, the speed cushions, the electronic sign or speed warnings, you know, whether those things work and what other kind of things they can do to sort of help slow down traffic. And I think a lot of the issue too, when I was talking with the chief, is not even necessarily the speed, but the lack of stopping at lights and stop signs.
Yeah.
People, you know, that might, you know, we were talking about that, that might actually be more of an issue than the, than the speed.
But as I mentioned, you're speeding through a lot of residents and your plan is to continue to have a good dialogue with essentially all residents of the city since you're an at-large candidate. And you have a building bridges newsletter that you started. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, so I have a newsletter. They can sign up on my website, it's haveman.com. You can also, people can read past issues if they don't want to sign up or if they want to see whether they would want to sign up. And I don't just share information about my campaign. I share information about the city that I, when going to city council meetings or other activities, you know, that people tell me about, whether it's the Historical Society or the Green Team, or, you know, or just that I hear, you know, from people talking about it. I think people should know about it, and, you know, I put it in there. My last newsletter, I mentioned the Heritage Loan Program, which has a great 2% interest rate, but that's going away in 2026. So if people wanted to take advantage of that, they should definitely apply and get approved before the end of the year, things like that.
Yeah, that Heritage Home Loan Program is very, sounds like it's a great program for folks who are interested in doing upgrades to their home and they can get some. They also have a connection to contractors, I believe, part of the program besides the opportunity for a low-interest loan. But some of that is dependent on potentially state or federal grants. And so would it be best for folks who are applying to do it this year?
Yes, because some of that funding has gone away. So that's why they're not going to be offering the 2% rate next year.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you can get approved this year, that would, you know, to lock in that rate. If they're thinking about it, they might want to take advantage of that beforehand.
Okay. Well, that's, I'm already getting information through the mail about that program. So they, now the Rocky River officially is a member of that program. I think good things are going to happen and opportunities will be there for folks to, you know, if they're interested in doing some upgrading and keeping with the architectural style of the city and keeping the beautiful, older, you know, the, you see some beautiful Tudor homes or old Colonials. And we have really an interesting mixture of beautiful homes in the city. And but so the primary function of city council is the legislative body, you know, that you would think of when you think of federal or state, you're basically passing ordinances that, for the most part, relate to financial matters and funding the different departments. And you've had a chance to look a little bit at the books of Rocky River through your preparation for this role. Do you think that we are a city that's in pretty good shape? Or are we, we don't have any, anything that is looming that is going to require tax increases or anything of that nature that you can think of?
Yeah, I, when I first ran in 2021, I met with the finance director and the mayor both, and had long meetings with them. And it was really interesting to learn about the different financial concerns and considerations of the city, you know, that you might not know as an outsider, you know, just observing. So that was really interesting. I do think the city is pretty well-run and, you know, it's financially stable, and that's, that's a nice thing. You know, but I, you know, there's always improvements we can make and how we spend that money fairly so that all residents can enjoy the city.
We certainly have some huge projects, capital projects going right now. The fire station and then the Detroit Lake Road, the changes there, which are going to basically reduce the, the bridge coming across from four lanes to two. They've come across westbound on Clifton into Rocky River to Lake. And, and so that's going to require some oversight from city council as sort of, you know, I mean, obviously looking at approving possible, if there are any cost overruns. But your background as a civil engineer seems like it'd be a perfect fit to help make those kind of decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be useful on city council to have an engineer involved, since there are a lot of large infrastructure and construction projects. I've joked before that if you know anything about construction, you know, it rarely runs on time. And so, I mean, and there's always things that you run into that you can anticipate. So, you know, you try to build that into your estimates, but you never know for sure. I think that'd be a nice project, though. It's, you know, it's in conjunction. The, you know, there's public funds for the bridge portion. Rocky River is not responsible for that area, and Lakewood is basing their side. So, I mean, it's a nice partnership, and I think it would be a nice, nice outcome.
Yeah, and, you know, that's the good news is that it is structured so that Lakewood pays a lion's share of it. A lot of the work, I guess, is going to be done on the Lakewood side. They're going to be doing some stuff, like maybe even a roundabout or two on Clifton, to kind of create a more picturesque entrance to Rocky River, you know, going across the bridge. And but, yeah, it sounds like your, your background, professional background is going to be a good complement to the folks who are already there, who may have backgrounds in other aspects of business. Or, or in this case, we've got, we've got some attorneys.
I think I bring a fresh perspective. I mean, even just with the fire station moving, they recently moved it to the service garage while they're doing the construction. And they had to remove the underground fuel tanks that were present at the old location. And, you know, I've done a lot of tank removals, so it was interesting.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yep, as part of my environmental engineering background, did a lot of, a lot of underground storage taken, and the new fuel storage to the above ground. So it was interesting, you know, talking to the chief about, the fire chief about, you know, the removal and the new containment system and all those sorts of things. So I just, you know, I think I would probably ask questions that the rest of the council members might not, you know, get to ask.
Yeah, and.
I mean, I think it was all done correctly, but it's just nice to, you know, have some of that knowledge there.
When we have outside contracts we have to hire to do this work, you'll be a good person to oversee the paperwork and see if this makes sense, is from a perspective of somebody who is familiar with proposal documents for projects and, you know, different phases of projects and what sounds realistic and what doesn't. So that's, seems like it'd be very, pretty much in your wheelhouse, understanding that. So a big issue in Rocky River always is trash collection, and that kind of segues into, you know, right, right now, we've got an interesting combination of, of services we provide in Rocky River. People are, for the most part, satisfied, but now there is some discussion about the cost of our, our little trucks, scooters, if you will. And I know that in cases where folks have a long driveway, it's convenient for them to have these scooters so they don't have to kind of haul their trash out to the streets. So did you get any sense from, I would think since we have different areas of our city that have different perspectives, that you might be getting a lot of different opinions about that.
People definitely have varied opinions. I would say there's three minds. There's people feel strongly that they want the scooters, the people who feel strongly that we should switch to a system with the large bins, and then the people who are indifferent. So, but the, the truth of it is that we are spending a lot on our trash collection and that the, you know, the waste haulers and waste disposal facilities really want to encourage people to use their, the large bin system. And so the cost of us doing our own disposal, the costs just keep getting higher. So by switching, we could save, it's not a small amount. It's, you know, $5 million over the next few years.
Wow, wow, that's huge.
Big number. I believe that's what they said, but it was in the millions. So it's, it's a lot, and I personally agree. I don't really like the way the big bins look and they're hard to pull around. And but on the upside, they would be collected in one day. They could do the whole city. I mean, I would be concerned about everyone's jobs. Obviously, I wouldn't want to lose any, any jobs. So I, but I, maybe they could divert or reassign people into other services. Like if you do have a long driveway or you're not able to haul your trash out, perhaps there could be, you know, a service you could sign up for and we could have city employees come and pull those bins out for people.
Yeah.
You know, that sort of thing, you know.
There you go. So that's, yeah, that's a good way to compromise.
Yeah, so, you know, I, we could try and make, you know, you'll never make everybody happy, but maybe if, if, you know, at some point, even if you want something, if you can't afford it, you have to make a change. So it might be an unpopular decision, but maybe there's ways to sort of mitigate that so that it makes it more pleasing. And change is always difficult, so.
Yeah, well, that's the thing. Yeah, people are used to things the way they are.
Right.
You know, that's the way I, I kind of realized that it's time for me to start thinking about bagging my trash when I hear the darn sound of that cart, golf cart in my neighborhood. It's a reminder that maybe I should.
That's true.
Start, start hustling and next, see if I find my, I find myself like bagging up things. I hear the sound of that, that little scooter.
One thing I think we could do an improvement on is sort of the recycling education. I hear a lot of complaints from people about how their blue bag recycling is getting thrown away. And, you know, I, I even have talked to some of the trash collectors about that. And the thing is, the solid waste disposal fees are a set amount per ton, and then the recycling is another price. But contaminated recycling is more than both of those. So, so the city, you know, understandably, they give instructions to the people collecting the trash that if they see any, you know, contaminated recycling, like say a broken glass, glass is recyclable, but a broken drinking glass is not. Or, you know, wish recycling, things that people think should be recyclable but actually are not. If they see things like that and that, they will just throw away the blue bag. So I had some thoughts of how they could improve, you know, recycling education, because I think the people who are recycling would like it to go to recycling. And I don't think they would be offended if you tell them what they're doing wrong so that that, those materials actually do get into the recycling facility. One of those that the Green Team has suggested before were hoop stickers. You just put them right on the bag and explain why their bag is not, you know.
Hmm, that's good to get feedback, because otherwise, yeah.
Yeah, and then I had another thought. If, you know, a lot of times the city sends out those posters of what you can recycle, but it would be nice if it was like a little magnet with a QR code. You could just put it right in your kitchen. And then when you're going to throw something away, if you're not sure, you just scan that QR code, and then you find out whether or not your item is recyclable.
That sounds easy. And just drop that on your refrigerator, maybe, you know, that, that sticker, just to remind yourself. Because I, I think people have a, have the intention of, you know, working to, to keep a, you know, a green economy and maintaining the beauty of our, our city, and they want to recycle. But certainly if they're doing things incorrectly, not getting any feedback.
Right, there's a lot of confusion.
There's a lot of confusion, and it sounds like there's ultimately a cost above and beyond just the regular, you know, just for contaminated recycling amounts. So you've also spoken about things that we can do to manage the rainwater.
Yeah, so I, I think that we could encourage effusing when we have developers. One of those is affordable housing. I've talked about that before. I think there's a real shortage of affordable housing in our city. If you don't have affordable housing, then you don't attract young families, and then enrollment in the schools decline and the schools suffer. So, you know, I think you have to focus on that and sort of encourage developers. I know they would like to develop more expensive, you know, residential units, I think. But maybe that's not the only thing that the city needs, you know, because, you know, you can only fill so many of those. And also, we want to be able to attract people with affordable housing. But the other thing I think we could incentivize developers to do is to include some sort of sustainable aspects to their design. And one of those ideas I had was, it's simple and low cost around parking, parking lots you can put in rain gardens. And the surface flow from the parking lot runs into those. It naturally filters out contaminants and allows rainwater to infiltrate into the ground so that it's not taxing the sewers, which we are, you know, we have a lot of issues with our old sewer infrastructure being overburdened by storm water.
Yeah, there's another area where as a civil engineer in your, your past work experience, you can understand the environmental aspects of, and the importance of the sewers and in segregating storm sewer water from sanitary. And, you know, we, we've had some, I don't want to say violations, but we've had some issues, I believe, with our wastewater treatment plant that I guess have been addressed. But if anything in the future comes along that we have to address, you'll be able to kind of interpret the, you know, the findings that they have come, come across.
Yeah, so the way the city of Rocky River is set up, we have what's called inverted sewers. So they're above and below. And what happens is when a storm water sewer leaks, then it leaks into the sanitary sewer. And so during big storm events, you're getting a lot of storm water in there. Also an issue that a lot of the residential homes, mine included, have storm sewers that were tied into their sanitary sewers. So the city has been trying, they're, they're actually under an agreement with the EPA to reduce what's called their sanitary sewer overflows. And they're doing that by replacing the sewers in the, in the public driveway so that they're not that over-underdesigned. But you still have the impact of the residences that have those, you know, their storm sewer, sewer tied into their sanitary sewer feeding into those. So they've asked residents to try and make repairs, which can be costly. I know my own estimate was $11,000. So, you know, that's, that's a lot of money that people are not anticipating using on something like the sewers in their home. I do think there's some ways that we could sort of help residents come up with low-cost alternatives to that, you know, maybe capping their downspouts at the ground and splashing them out in their flowerbed if there's room, you know, just kind of helping them. Also, if they get like really high estimates, to sort of review those and see is this really appropriate or is there something else that could be done? But I know a lot of people have expressed, you know, frustration that they're supposed to make this expensive repair when it wasn't their fault that it was designed that way in the first place, so.
And in general, some of our sewers are over 100 years old, are they not?
Yeah, well, it's an old city, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, but, you know, there's such a, I mean, in order to maintain the beauty of our city and maintain safe streets, which, you know, don't have a lot of water buildup. And just to manage the, manage nature in some ways, that seems like a project that city councils really have, they have to be on the ball on, especially in our city, you know, just to keep everything.
Yeah, and I think they've done a great job with all the sewer work that they've been doing. They've been very proactive in trying to take care of those, you know, reducing flooding in people's basements. That's something you don't want.
Yeah, yeah.
They definitely address those issues.
Yeah, it's not an exciting topic for residents to talk about, but it is very, very important, and it's, it's good to have.
It's not a glamorous way to spend money.
Right. But it's really good to have city council and someone like yourself on city council to monitor it and to, you know, give heads-ups if we need to invest more money in repairs or do some preventative medicine-type things to, we can do now. But, okay, um, so is it, do you think it's important to have a diversity on city council, as in different types of people, different walks of life, different professions? Maybe even different economic backgrounds and, you know, is that important?
Definitely. I mean, I wouldn't suggest city council should be all engineers either, but, you know, I think everybody brings something different and valuable to, to the, you know, to the conversation. And so, you know, it's just like talking to residents from different neighborhoods, the same as talking to people from different professions. Everybody has a different perspective of what, you know, of what they see and the solutions that they might come up with. The considerations that you have to include when you're devising a solution.
I had Councilman Boyle say something interesting to me. He's a senior and he does a lot with the senior center. And he's, he's somewhat on a fixed income, and he said to me, you know, our rec center charges $5 for lunches, and that's actually a little steep in the eyes of some folks. That there, we had some folks, he was saying some folks would go over to like Fairview's senior center for lunch, because it was only like $1. So that was like perspective I had not heard. It's interesting that, you know, we're putting a lot of money into the restoration of the rec center and they, everyone is all, the programs are fantastic. But, you know, that was just something as far as, you know.
I'll have to add that to my list. When I, when I'm talking to residents, I try to keep a list of all the suggestions or comments that they have so that, you know, I can keep those in mind. And if I'm ever in a position to, you know, hopefully I will be in a position soon to, to help, you know, look into some of those things and see what can be done. I mean, not everything can be solved, but hopefully we can address some things. I know just at the last council meeting, there was a proposal for, for the new rec center prices. They were going to increase the wages of the part-time and lifeguard employees because we had to keep up with Sherwood Park. So apparently these other cities are.
It's like an art choice.
And now with lunches, but.
Senior, right, senior centers and pools, there's like, it becomes like a.
I know I've been to the hot dog Fridays. I love those.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, in general, you know, factoring in that we have a large number of seniors in our community, maybe I'm up, I heard the numbers saying up to 25% retirees. So our senior center is a great place for folks to participate in some things that keep them active. And the facility is beautiful and the people seem to be great. And so the, do you think that, that because we have so many seniors in our city, we have a, we have some different priorities? Should we do some things maybe to help them besides the, you know, the senior center? I guess just on city council, you're in a position where you can just keep everyone informed about, keep seniors informed about what programs are out there available? Maybe getting rides to appointments, that sort of thing? I think there's services for that that, and just maybe wellness checks, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think, I think an important part of being on council is keeping residents informed of options, you know, of things that are out there, seniors, all, you know, the whole age stand. And I do think it would be nice if we could offer some services to seniors to help them stay in their homes if they want to, you know, age in places, they say. You know, maybe snow removal, leaf removal. I know when my mom lived in Parma, they had a program, they had applied for a grant where they could apply for like fall detection equipment, you know, that they could.
Oh, great, yeah.
Yeah, the fire department would come along and come around and install and check their fire alarms.
Smoke detectors.
Yeah, so I just, you know, the little things like that would be, I think, helpful as well, kind of nice service to provide. I know there are some things you can sign up for at the senior center, like leaf collection. I know the council guys always help with that.
Oh, really?
But that's sort of a volunteer situation. So, and then I know one resident was telling me, she didn't even know the deadline had passed already. And, you know, she was like, it was too late to sign up for it, but she had no idea that, you know, that it was so early. So, you know, just some, I think we improved in communication, but obviously there's always more communication that we can, we can improve on.
I even heard there might be a program available to help seniors get handrails installed in places in their home. If they have, if they have, like, I'm in a position now where I'm looking at my steps going up to my second floor, and I'm realizing that I really don't have a sufficient handrail.
Just that short, short trip can be dangerous.
So if there are programs that'll at least connect seniors with reputable vendors who can do that work and maybe get some financial relief when they, free, free would be amazing if, you know.
Right, or perhaps like when they do like the sidewalk replacement program, the contractor who does that work, you know, offers a discount to people who have to replace squares on their own. I mean, maybe they could have something like that with, you know, it, I'm just, you know, brainstorming. But, you know, maybe if there's a couple, you know, people who work with the city to, you know, kind of reach out to residents and see who needs assistance, maybe there can be some sort of group pricing sort of thing.
Yeah, I think there are contractors who want to volunteer their time and services, and maybe it's just a matter of connecting them with our residents in certain cases.
And I did work with the senior center a couple of years ago. They started a program, Reach. It's River Elder Adults Call for Help. So that for people who are feeling isolated or just struggling in some way, you know, they can call and speak to somebody, you know, even if it's need somebody to listen to them. Or, or if they need any assistance. So it's nice that they have that resource that they can call and talk to somebody, you know.
Well, that's, that's very meaningful, and it's above and beyond, you know, the having the building and the place for folks to congregate. Those kind of services that you're describing are also so important to the quality of life of our residents. And, you know, so. Do you see any, any projects that, you know, we've got, we've got some projects right now that are starting, and I just wanted to get your opinion, if I could, on a few of them. One being, just for. just for selfish reasons, I live on Shoreland and the plan is to put a small park corner of Worcester and Shoreland. Do you know when the process is on that, it has been approved by the city?
Yeah, so they tried for a while to get, you know, some kind of funding and things to help with that. And I don't know if you remember, it used to be an auto body shop.
With a bunch of, you mentioned underground tanks.
Yes, they had one for the gas station, then a mechanic shop, and then
Anthony's from Moolies, it was automotive. There was a gas station that it was a repair guy who I went to for stuff, I remember.
I did not know that, I mean, I take my car to the shop now, but I didn't know that that was the name of it when it was there.
It was the other Spremoli, that, you know, we had this Spremoli's on Detroit, then I think this was maybe a relative, he had a small, like one or two
Yeah, I don't remember the name of it, that was when we first lived on Laurel. But so since then, that property's been cleaned up and I learned recently at the city council meeting that it actually was part of the land bait program, which I thought was pretty neat. I had participated in the land bait program too for a project in Lakewood, it's now the Amazot, it's over there, it used to be Midland Steel. But so they got it cleaned up and it's actually going to be sort of a resting park. It's going to have a swing, it's going to have a filling station for your water and for dogs, it's going to have a dog watering station. And it's going to have a bike repair location that you could, you know, put air in your tires and fix up your bike. So it's, it's more of a stopping park, it's not going to have a playground structure or anything like that. So it's just going to be, you know, sort of a place to sit and relax and enjoy the city.
Like a motocross track with the jumps?
I don't think it's going to be like that.
Okay.
It's for relaxing.
The only thing I would say is that we just need to be mindful because the traffic on if they can maybe even think about reducing the speed limit. I know people don't like to hear that, but Worcester is thirty-five miles an hour and realistically, when people go through that light at Shoreland, they speed up. So it's, it might be as much as forty or so.
Because they're trying to get through the intersection.
Getting through the intersection and
And that's right where the park is.
And I would just also say that if there's a way to restrict folks from if there's a park there to, there are going to be people crossing over Shoreland just barely after the turn. So when people turn into that street, maybe they're not, their eye is not focused on pedestrians at that point. But I mean, I would just say that if people adhere to the crosswalk and not try to just cross the street and jaywalk, you know, on Shoreland, but you know, that has to do with existing rules if they if they pay attention to existing rules, they should be all right there.
I think the city recently put up some safety reminders after those recent accidents, you know, just reminding everyone about, you know, pedestrian rules, biking rules and traffic rules. It's kind of a shared responsibility to keep it safe, so, I mean, you should always look out for people even if they're not following the rule. But just because somebody is not following the rule doesn't mean that he used to, could go. But, but you know, just for everybody for their own safety to be very mindful.
Yeah.
Of where they're crossing.
And but it is a, a little completely vacant, this well-maintained property. Lawn is always, the grass is always great, you know, it looks nice and but you know, a park that would not be you have a lot of people like throwing frisbees and things like that, that certainly is not going to work in that congested area. But a place like you're describing sounds fine.
Yeah.
That's good. Now, in general, they regard Rocky River as what they call a built-out city where there's really not much room for additional new construction. That would not require something else to be torn down. So, but do you feel like there's room to grow economically in our city and to attract businesses and, you know, places that hire, pay good wages in our city? Are there some opportunities there?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, there, you know, maybe there aren't large areas to do like a large development, but obviously there's small spots, there were two small office buildings that went in on Lake Road. So those were, you know, areas that were being underutilized. I know there's the area over by Ingersoll, that, you know, that's a potential development area. So you know, there's always transition and I think there's always opportunities for more developments. Maybe just not on a huge scale like you might imagine if you had a lot of land.
Like somewhere like Westlake has these large industrial
But I, I don't know that that's necessarily what, you know, part of the character of the city.
No, not, no, no, not at all, but you'd maintain a good relationship with the Chamber of Commerce as now is kind of the case with council and, you know, but we are primarily driven by property taxes from residences. We have some, some city income tax and some commercial real estate revenues, but do you have any thoughts about the, well, one thing we need to clarify is that just to remind people that the city's government tax rates are independent of school district and the library, so what they're paying now, the city portion is probably I want to say only, you know, less than twenty percent of the full, full amount of their tax bill.
Right, the city's portion is very small compared to the, the school budget and I don't fault them, that it's, education is a big part of the city. I think that, you know, the schools are a large reason why most, many people move here. So, you know, we invest in education. But yeah, so a lot of times people don't make that distinction, like, you know, understandably, they're frustrated when the tax bill comes. Nobody enjoys paying that. So, yeah, I mean
So
Things are expensive, but yes, the city's portion is relatively small and I think it's pretty well managed.
Yeah, well, I mean, we may, we may have some wealthy folks in our city, the city itself may not be wealthy as far as a lot of like, a lot of, you know, funds lying around. I mean, bank accounts earning interest, we're, we seem to be using funds, you know, wisely right now.
Well, I don't think anybody, even if they have funds bringing around, feels like they want to spend it on taxes.
No, no, that's right, that's true. But with respect to our schools, you, nice picture, nice picture of your family here.
Thank you.
Why, it just came out?
Yeah, I have good things to say about the school and I had two kids go through the schools, K through twelve. That's why we married, moved here after we got married, was, you know, for the school. Yeah, one of them is a junior at University Dayton and she's studying pharmaceutical chemistry. And the oldest is Dunlop College and he's working for Northrop Grumman, a defense contractor in there. And he's an engineer, so yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, so I mean, you know, I think there's always challenges going through the schools, you know, getting the resources you need for your kids and that's always a work in progress, but I think good people on the school board kind of looking out for those sorts of things too. And, you know, and I know the school board is also limited because they don't actually implement the day-to-day operations of the, of the school. So that's, you know, another thing to keep in mind, you know, sometimes some things are not, you know, they choose the people, but then they don't necessarily get to implement, you know, I think they have to rely on the people that they choose to run the schools the way you would like, but I mean, overall, I felt like I did get a good education. I hope that everyone else's kids have ultimately a good experience.
Well, people are focused right now on the football game tonight.
Yes, yes.
A big important first playoff game.
Right in the middle of trick-or-treating, but I hope everyone's safe out there.
So we're going to spend an hour trick-or-treating.
Turnover to the game.
I guess that's the way to go, just kind of an odd, the way the schedule played out this year, but Pirates are looking good this year and they are, you know, starting their journey. I think you need to win six playoff games to win state championships, so fingers crossed there as to the
As a band parent, I miss, as a band parent, I miss going to all the games and hearing all the music.
My wife was in her marching band in high school and people are, people even as they get later in their adulthood, if they were in the band, they're still very proud of it and they
Well, I wasn't in the band, but both my kids were, so I spent a lot of time
What did they play, what interest?
Including the twenty-plus hour bus trip to Florida, but my
Oh, did you, did they march in like one of the parades?
Yes, yes, in Orlando, when they went, yeah, in January.
Twenty-hour bus ride?
Yes, yes, it was quite an adventure. Some ice flew off of a semi truck into the windshield of one of the
Oh, no.
The buses and our tear vans, we spent the night in an Exxon parking lot, it was, it was quite an adventure. We had a good time, we did have a good time, so. But my son, he played saxophone and my daughter played percussion.
Oh, like a real heavy drum?
Well, so with a percussionist, you don't necessarily play the same instrument every, every year, but I, she was cymbals and then she did the snare drum. And then when they do the concerts, the rest of the year, they play all the instruments. I don't know if you've ever watched whether concerts, the percussionists in the back are always moving around because they're going from instrument to instrument, so it's kind of neat. But they, she did complain about how heavy they were and one time I put it on, it really does kind of cut into your shoulders.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, some of those, I mean, some, well, they have some on wheels, it seems like, you know, they have to have other folks. Maybe only certain bands.
Yeah, I've seen that some on wheel it out there.
Yeah, but yeah, we're very blessed in our city to have a great school district and a great library system. And our city is also doing good things as far as safety and security and but a fresh set of eyes is always a good thing, especially in circumstances where we've got a lot of new projects that are going on, which would definitely take advantage of your, your life experience and your, your ability to kind of look analytically at projects and, you know, maybe grant, grant documents and things like that because the other side of your job will be to hopefully encourage us to obtain grants as where we can.
Yeah, the city is pretty good about buying for as much free money, I guess I would call it as, as they can. So I think they do a good job of that, but I mean, like I said, I, you know, I would have fresh ideas that I would offer or suggest and, you know, bring up during the discussion, so that'd be worthwhile and frankly, I just, I think it's good to have competition and new people come with new ideas. When you have a lot of the same people running in there often, you get, you know, people running unopposed for a long time. Then I think there's not a lot of incentive for them to go out and talk to residents. I mean, I hear a lot of residents tell me, nobody's ever come to their door. Like, that's one of my things, so the last two times when I ran, I ran in Ward One and I knocked on every door regardless of party, regardless of whether people vote. I was there knocking on their doors, trying to meet as many people as possible. Because you know, if, if you win, you're representing everyone, so it shouldn't matter.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so
That's a good point to remember that, that, you know, although we do have a, what's called a partisan election in Rocky River where political party is listed on the ballot. You are pledging to work for, for all residents regardless.
Work for everybody.
If they voted whatever they, however they voted, or even if they didn't vote at all.
Right.
And
So, and, and this time I'm running at large because our kids are out of the house, I don't have anyone to cut the grass now. And so I'm, so I'm running at large, so I have flexibility to live anywhere in the city. But it's a lot of area to cover, but I'm still out there in every neighborhood knocking on the doors, trying to meet as many people as possible. And I hear a lot of people tell me, well, nobody's ever come to knock on my door, which, how is that possible? I mean, people who've lived here for twenty, twenty-six years, somebody just told me the other day and I was like, well, you know, that's a long time to never have anyone come and meet you, so. Yeah, so I think if nothing else, it's good to, you know, have that, you know, have somebody with, you know, different energy, new energy to come and meet people and hear what they have to say. Everybody has opinions, so.
Yeah, everyone does and in, you know, your judgment is going to be crucial to, you know, sometimes people are venting and sometimes people have some, you know, very, very legitimate concerns and, you know, it's, it's, it's okay for, if people want to chat with their city council representative, either their ward person or any of the at-large people.
Right.
I would even argue to say even the other ward
Yeah.
People who are not your own ward rep should be responsive. But you're building Bridges Newsletter seems to be great, would you recommend? I, I've been pushing to see some video recording of the meetings, that's up to the we have a longstanding tradition of not doing it, I guess, right now, but that might not be a bad thing, just engage more folks.
Yeah, I, during the pandemic, I would go to the council meeting virtually because that's how they were held at the time. And it was great because you could listen in to the meeting while you're making dinner, you know, or whatever. So it was really, it was nice to have them online for sure.
Definitely, and okay, well, I, I would just remind everyone that our group, the Democrats Rocky River PAC, has endorsed Lisa Advent for City Council at Large. And we encourage you to vote for her, either if you're voting early, down to the border of elections. I guess today and Monday, people can still do that. But election day is Tuesday and Lisa will be on your ballot regarding, regardless of what wards you live in. And we also are supporting the other Democrats on the ticket, those being Christina Morris, who is also running at large in Rocky River. So you can vote for Christina and Lisa without canceling each other out, because there, you know, there are three roles to be filled through at large. We also have Jean Gallagher, who was running in Ward Three. And like Lisa and Christina, we've heard a lot of great things about her engagement with the public and, and getting a lot of resident interactions and she has, has dedicated herself to, Jean has dedicated herself to addressing all of her resident questions in a prompt manner. And then in Ward Four, we have an unopposed candidate, Paul Ship. Congratulations, I guess, in advance, Paul, for winning your race. If you vote for yourself Tuesday, that's all you need to do, just make sure you vote for yourself and you've got that race won, so we appreciate that. But thank you very much, Lisa, and your hard work and dedication to the city is really remarkable. And hopefully it'll pay dividends on Tuesday, thank you.
Well, thank you for taking the time to, you know, to talk to me and thank you to everybody who's listening and to everyone who answers the doors. And even to those who don't, everyone who helped me or put my signs up, I couldn't do without the help of other people.
Yeah, oh, before I forget, you've been endorsed by quite a few groups, have you not?
Yes.
Want to tell us a little bit about that?
Well, one of the exciting ones I was endorsed by just recently, me, Amy Acton, is Three One Four Action. It's a group that supports STEM candidates, doctors, scientists, for becoming candidates. So I thought that was pretty exciting, helped me out and endorsed me. But on my website, you can see the list of all the other endorsements, all the other council members and the law director's endorsement as well. I mean, the Democrat council members, I should say, not all of them, but
Dr. Acton is great, I mean, that's another thing that we're doing as a group is we're going to be working hard to get her elected next year for governor of Ohio. But she's, she's much appreciative of STEM-based candidates and that kind of background, being herself in the medical field.
Yeah, she had a really interesting background, I heard she speak recently. Well, like anybody you're going to vote for, you should check them out and see what you think of them.
Yep, thanks very much.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you.
Appreciate, yeah. And cut. Great, that went great, thank you so much.